The next item on the agenda is the capital improvement budget and program. First item is the airport capital projects. I know that Mrs. Dawn Veach is here, Airport Manager. Good evening. Good to have you here.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Hope everybody had a great holiday. And we're ready for the snow that's on the way.
I hear that. I hear it coming. If you could just state publicly your name and position.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Dawn Veach, and I'm the Airport Manager for Salisbury Regional Airport.
Dawn Parks, Department of Finance Director.
Great. And we're going over the CIP. That'd be great. It'll let you.
Yes, sir. And I'll draw your attention to page 51 of the entire document. So would you like for me to go through each one of these and just give you an explanation of what they are? Do you just have specific questions?
I think if you could just give us a brief overview, that would be great.
Okay. Very happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity, too. So STARS and ADS-B is the first item. And apologize in advance for the aviation acronyms, but I will explain what each of those are.
All right. For the council, that's 55 on the PDF page. Okay?
Oh, it's 55, not 51.
It's 51 in the document, on the written document. It's 55 on the PDF file, which you're probably following, I'm guessing.
Up in the top left. I wanted to say it would be.
Oh, okay. I see what you're talking about, but I see it right here, the STARS. Okay.
Okay. So the FAA mandated many years ago, in 2020, that all general aviation aircraft would be equipped with what's called ADS-B out. 2020 is coming. What STARS is, is a computer-generated radar system. We have five radars that surround our airport, of which none give us 100% coverage. STARS will take those five different radar images and generate them and create a single image that gives us 100% radar coverage. Radar coverage is required to operate the ADS-B equipage that is required in 2020 on every aircraft. ADS-B is like a transponder-type thing that you've seen on the TV where they show an air traffic controller and all the airplanes in the sky. General aviation aircraft typically did not have some of that type of equipment, nor did they have a receiver and a transceiver to where that information could talk to each airplane. It could only talk to the ground facility at the air traffic control center. So that's what this system is. You may have recently heard it called "next-gen technology" on the news. It's been a platform of discussion with privatization with air traffic control and the fact that the FAA has not been able to keep up with their deployment activity. Because our radar was taken away several years ago and deployed over to Wallops, when that was done, they angled it, and our ASR-11 that's on our airport layout plan for future installation is no longer available, nor would we want to purchase that. A new ASR-11 radar is over $11 million. The funds to put in this computer-generated radar is about $500,000 to $600,000 to include the installation of the controller's panel that would now be needed in our air traffic control facility. Okay? The next one is the ARF, the Aircraft Rescue and Fire Station. Last November, we took the ARF control as far as manpower staffing from Piedmont and moved it into a contract under Fiore. They are now housed in Hangar 10, or, excuse me, Hangar 6 on our airport until we can build a proper facility. There were two reasons to re-designate who had responsibility for that. One was because the contract was coming up for renewal. That service was always in lieu of landing fees, that Piedmont would provide that management for the fire rescue, because their staff was there when their equipment would arrive. With the outreach to other carriers, it is necessary, it was also necessary, to remove that and bring that back under our control in a contractual-type agreement until we can fund that under some other method. So we need the building for our ARF hangars. We've also asked for another ARF truck. Basically, when our vehicle is down, Parsonsburg is the second responder for us, or actually our first responder after we have, and they are not legally equipped to respond to meet a sole requirement. So if our aircraft, if our ARF truck is down, we can't actually service any airline service without a backup. So we've asked FAA for a backup vehicle.
How many ARF trucks do you have now?
One.
How many vehicles do you have?
One.
Just one? Didn't there used to be several more?
I don't know. I arrived in February. But since I've been there, there's one vehicle.
Just one now?
Yes, sir. And Parsonsburg is our second responder for backup, and then Salisbury.
Then it would be automatic dislodge.
Right. And, but unfortunately, they don't have foam. So when the vehicle was down this summer, we had to get it fixed precariously, so.
Do you have somebody set up that could loan you a vehicle, like Wallops?
They're not close enough, and we reached out to them during the time that we had a malfunction, and they couldn't assist us. So MBWI is too far away to get something here if it breaks, when it breaks, then if you don't have time to get it repaired, so.
So they wouldn't have a loner for you? That's what I was asking. None?
No loners, no, sir. Not on a full-time basis to keep it here. So taxiway Charlie apron and the corporate hangar ramp. This year, we paved the taxiways and the T-hangers and are going to finish that in the spring. The next ramp that needs to be done is the ramp in front of the corporate hangars, starting from AG Atlantic, past WBOC, and then on up to where the old, the very old hangar of Bayland, the large one is. So they'll resurface that ramp. It's breaking, crumbling, et cetera. We did a pavement management contract this year. We just received that final report. The draft had indicated that that was a critical ramp area next that needed to be resurfaced due to FOD and cracking and potholes. And then also, we hit another one that was a priority as well. The next one is the rehab, the access control system. Our current security system, when I arrived in February, was not functional. There were a lot of gates that were open and not locked. We've repaired all those at great expense, because the system was installed in 2002 and is obsolete. So trying to get repairs and parts is extremely expensive. We spent $17,000 on one gate alone, trying to get it back up and operational. So we've put in for our budget to have a new control system put in, one that will also be upgraded. So if we get another carrier in here with a larger seat capacity, and we have to go to a higher level of security, it will meet those standards. We should have those standards anyway, just because of the type of operations that we have now. But we're grandfathered, basically, with the old system because of the year that it was installed. Snow removal equipment building. Our snow removal equipment is basically sitting out in the snow. Right now, I've got part of it in the ARF hangar that we're using, because they had space on one side. Piedmont is removing some equipment. We terminated a lease with them in order to get that hangar back, to be able to put some of our equipment inside, so it doesn't sit out in the cold during the snow season. Trying to get those things cranked up and ready to go, when it's as frigid as it is right now with no hangars, is really difficult, and it creates a lot of false starts and things like that for us. So we've put in the budget to have that done, and that's in 2020. The next item is the drone facility, to design and build that site. The site is 160 by 160-foot landing pad that will have calibration annotations on it for an operator that is interested in coming in. The hangar that goes along with that is 10,000 square foot is proposed. The cost of that is $750,000. One thing that council should note is we have applied with the FAA to be a test site for the United States. They're only going to select seven in the first run, and then they'll select another seven after they get them established. I attended the conference in California last, a couple weeks ago, and right now, we have 50 companies that are interested in being our test, on our test site list, if we're awarded. And we're going to do the test regardless of whether we're awarded the designation as being one of the testing, because FAA said as long as we collect that data in a format that they are requiring, that they would accept our data, even though we weren't part of the program. The program only gives operators a first-come approval process for the waivers and operating agreements that they might need. And FAA has a huge backlog. Because we're so closely located with Wallops and NASA, this is a huge opportunity. We have a mixture, a unique mixture of air carrier, military operations, and general aviation flight training that is really unique to where we have a rural area to be able to operate the drone activity and do tremendous testing.
Will, will, will the federal government ship in any money toward the $750,000, or?
The FAA is not funding anything for drones, although Maryland Aviation possibly could, and that will, I have a meeting with them on the 9th to do our ACIP with them, and it will be proposed as well.
And you said you had an operator interested in coming in. Are they going to share in the cost of this?
They would rent it. This is a land, this would be a leased hangar, just like the other hangars that we lease.
And what other, I know you said a lot of things about what was going to happen. What other sources of income would come in to help pay for this? So you said, is anything else?
If, if this is successful, and we have a good development project going with the data testing, my, my, my hope is that the companies that test with us, the 50 companies, because of the synergy that would be created, because of our unique testing area next to Wallops and the restricted airspace that they've agreed to share with us for this project, that that partnership would continue, and that they would, they would then build their own buildings and their own, and bring jobs to the county, which is what my goal is, is to bring jobs to the airport.
Is there any other test sites close by?
No, not, not under this project, because they haven't authorized drone operations in controlled airspace at airports yet for the purposes of testing like this.
So they've not authorized this, so what happens if we build it and they don't authorize it?
They've authorized it under the guidance of this, yes, for us to continue doing the test, yes, because we have been accepted as one of the test applicants.
Okay. I understand that.
You have to be a test applicant in order to be granted the rights and approvals.
Okay.
We just won't be one of the top seven if we're not selected first. I think we will be, because we have such a unique concept that we're performing here. Our concept that we sent them is definitely unique compared to everybody else's.
Do we build this first and then count on getting accepted, or?
No, because I already have a drone operator that wants to do calibration here. I don't have a signed lease, because I don't have anything to lease yet, so by the time I get it done, he could be gone. But I don't anticipate that with the market that is out there at this time.
Could we get a committal letter from him before we spent the money?
That I don't know. I'd have to explore that option with the developer.
I guess the question I would have, too, is, you're very good with, you know, the resources that you have. Have we, have we looked at whether there's any federal or state funding that would support that?
I have looked, and there is zero federal. The FAA has been determined not to fund anything with drone development. They're not exactly welcoming this with open arms at this time. It's kind of being forced upon them with an industry that has exploded, and they're having to deal with it.
And they don't have a taxi yet.
Exactly. Probably. But there is one company that is very interested in moving here and setting up an ODA, which is an authorization to certify new drones. So since the FAA recently required ones that are of a certain weight and classification, they have to register as an unregistered aircraft. All of those rules require now that they have to be certified. If they were to move here, that would include Boeing and Airbus's contracts, and I'm working with them to see about, they're going to be part of our team, but I'm trying to get them to open a East Coast office and designate here. Our facility and runway would definitely accommodate that. And the taxiway golf that is already in the industrial part is perfect for that type of operation.
Okay. I want to go back just for a second on the snow removal equipment.
Yes, sir.
It's listed here as 1.550, $1,550,000. And yet, under state and federal grants, it's listed as 1,350, $1,350,000. That's on page five. Your page five. It's page 51, where it says $1,550,000. And page five, it says $1,350,000.
We have put in for a grant for that. It's on our AIP that we're working on on January 9th next week.
So that, what you're suggesting is that, I guess, $200,000 of this cost would be incurred by the county? But when this says capital costs, general fund and bond projects, it sounds, it looks to me like you're talking about funding the entire $1,550,000 locally from the county. Believe me, I get confused very easily with CIP. So I'm, in, on page six, five, on page five, it's listed as a federal grant?
On the summary page, where you're, on the summary page, under the capital costs, it has the $1,550,000. But when we go down under the funding sources, the funding sources will have it broken out, the $200,000 from the county.
It does?
Yeah.
What page is that stuck in?
This is the summary page. It's our CIP, page 50, the starting one. So on the individual page, which is 56, it shows the $200,000 from PEGO, from the general fund, and the 1.35 from federal.
Well, then, on page 51, when I see capital costs, the capital cost page, general fund and bond projects, why is it listed as a full $1,500, or $50,000 in '19 and $1,500,000 in '20?
In '20.
Yeah.
I probably should have split between, split have it on the page twice. Because only the $200,000 from the county.
And is that, is that PEGO, or is that?
That is how it is listed, is as $200,000 from PEGO, yes.
Okay. Then wouldn't this be, instead of having this total under 1,550, under capital cost, general fund and bond projects, I would have thought that would be 1,350. Actually, that wouldn't even be.
It would just, if I, if I split it on the summary page, I would have to have it in two. I don't know if it would be more confusing or less confusing to have it twice on that page, on the, on the summary page.
Well, on page 51, right, when I read that, it looks like at some point in time, we're going to either spend $1.5 million, the county either from a bonding, from bonding or from general fund. Is that true?
No. It's only the $200,000. So in the future, would you rather see it unsplit between?
Well, if we're not, if, if that $1.5 million isn't coming from the general fund or from a bond project.
We should.
It confuses me that it's in there.
Me, too.
I would guess that maybe $200,000 should be in there.
Put the $200,000, and then have the project listed twice.
I guess.
Yeah, that's.
It's three times or four times right now. I don't know.
We'll look at.
Believe me, this is a long way, we're miles beyond where we were just last year, so this is, it's good, but I was confused.
It's, like I had, we had said, a work in progress.
Sure.
So, well, I'll make a note on that, so for future ones, we'll split them, split them out, so it's less confusing.
All right.
Now, on the individual page, when you look at the individual page, it does have it split out.
And that is the summary?
The, the individual, for the individual project.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I got you.
It has it split between the $200,000.
I see. Sometimes I don't get a chance to try to coordinate all three at the same time. I see what you're saying.
Yes.
And one other thing that makes it a little confusing, our fiscal year '18 is FAA's fiscal year '17, but it actually gets paid out in a different year, so it really gets confusing. And hopefully, we've got all our pews in the right bu, or all our squares in the right pew right now, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that cover that first section? To move to the second section? Any other questions?
Questions?
So the next portion, under Enterprise Zone, the Air Traffic Control Tower is a contract tower. It is not an FAA-funded and supported tower. So we have certain obligations that we have to maintain, the equipment and the conditions of that tower. They need a replacement ASOS, which is an automated weather reporting system. The one we have now is antiquated, and it is under lots of repair. That has been in the budget for several years and deferred and deferred and deferred. So it needs to be brought forward, and that needs to be brought up. Without weather, our airlines cannot land. It's prohibited without the electronic weather system. We do not have a weather observer here. So that was in there, as well as an upgrade to a few other items. We just have a contract that went out to update their analog voice recording to a digital. That one also had been deferred for many years, as well as their HVAC. So we're trying to catch up on the past years and get some of the equipment in there updated and functioning and operational per the requirements of the FAA contract orders. Runway tax, or, excuse me, taxiway 1432, the extension, the request on the previous extension was to go to 7,000 feet to support the EMB 145 that American Eagle now is operating. FAA did not support that request, so now we're back at the drawing board to extend the runway to support the EMB 145. Our consultants have gone through and done a calculation, and that aircraft actually needs 7,500 feet to operate within the criteria that FAA has set forward. And then to extend it an additional 500 feet would give us coast-to-coast operations with our critical aircraft, which would be a Boeing 757. FedEx and UPS, the majority of their fleet are 757s for domestic use, and they use the larger aircraft for international. We're trying to court them in here right now, as we speak, with FEMA and MEMA for a disaster relief effort here to co-locate FedEx, UPS in the same hangar that FEMA, MEMA would have for their distribution center, as well as a staging area in the event that we have any kind of natural or natural, natural or man-made disaster here on the Del Marva. That effort is a tri-state effort, by the way, for FEMA. It's going very well. And I got a good letter today. I was excited.
Okay. So that's going to cost $35 million?
That runway extension will cost $35 million. What we are planning to do is ask for discretionary money from the Congress, and Senator Carden and Van Hollen are both on board with that. They've also been looking at that. And so is Congressman Harris. To support that, in my briefing when we were in the governor's office, I did explain that to them, that we would be asking for discretionary funding to fund that runway. Runways are expensive. Between land acquisition, design, and moving NAVAids, our navigation system will have to be relocated, because the threshold will be relocated. So it is an expensive project that would not be a sole burden on the county.
Do you have any idea what it will cost the county?
Normally, our funding sources go 95% FAA, or 90% FAA, and then 5% Maryland State and 5% local, which we try to fund out of PFCs, our passenger facility tax that we collect. A project this size may not be able to facilitate that, to where we may have to have a county portion. Until it gets closer and we know whether the FAA will fund, we don't know the exact portion that we would be committed to.
Nice to hear something about that.
It, it's confusing, because it's on here as a 20 build. That's an FAA 20, 21 build.
It's there.
So, yeah, so we still got a little bit of time. Our airport master plan, as you know, is underway and in the process of being completed and developed to include the runway extension, as well as some other additions. Once that's done, we'll have a better idea, and then we'll start funding, requesting the discretionary money through the, through the proper channel, as well as congressional and through our governor's office, through the tri-state effort.
Okay.
Taxiway Alpha Rehab is the same as taxi lane Charlie that was in the above section. The runway, what did I call it a minute ago? The runway, the pavement, excuse me, the pavement analysis that we just did identified taxiway Alpha, which is the parallel taxiway to our main runway 1432. And that runway and taxiway has, were refurbished at the same time, several years ago. Alpha is now showing signs of deterioration to be the priority one in that assessment for our taxi lanes. So we moved it up from Bravo North, which was scheduled to be done next year. I had already re, I had deferred that, because taxiway, it's complicated, but there's a taxiway that we very rarely use. The previous FAA project was looking to fund over $2 million to resurface that, when we're going to actually tear that up in about two years. So I deferred it and said we wouldn't do it, so now we have that funding sitting there. So we want to roll that with FAA forward to hit our most, most-needed taxiway refurbishment. And the funds that would be used for that, some of that will be done through FAA, and that's why it's broken out the way it is. And if you look on the sheet, it's also broken out with FAA funding and our funding, so it may be a little misleading on the total funding there. That was on page, I redid these, let's see. Taxiway Alpha is our page 60. So in that, it breaks it out with the county enterprise, the state, and the FAA funding in those proper proportions.
Yeah, that's a lot easier to follow than the charts. I see, I know.
The individual pages.
Yes.
I can do those if you'd rather, if you want to flip through those instead of the front one. Just go to the next one.
I think it's all in the same sequential order, anyway.
It's in the same order. Yep. So the next one is, any questions on that before we go to the next one? So the land acquisitions for runway 14 project, that, that is a guesstimate, $6 million. That depends on how much man, land out towards the south, is that southeast?
Southeast.
Southeast, thank you. Turned around here every day.
Who are the property owners out there?
There, there's several different property owners out there, and there are some wetlands. So the reason we don't know this until we get our EPA environmental assessment back, which will go in after the master plan is completed, then we'll have an idea of what lands they've identified that will have to be purchased, not only for the runway extension, but also for protected zones that are required for air navigation and easements that will have to be imposed. So that could require, or maybe not require, land acquisition. It all depends. And so once we get that environmental, and then we know how much wetland mitigation, if any, is required, then we'll have a better figure. But that is a rough guesstimate, given our consultant's experience, and he's been here a long time. And we also had a recent appraisal on land values around us, and we used some of that information for current figures to give us a ballpark of what we thought that might be. Hopefully, it won't be any. We could always be lucky. The next one is the, we, we, if you recall, we demolished and sold and transferred three old T-hangers that were pretty much condemned at the entrance to the airport. Those have been, that has all been moved out. When we move the, when we build the new ARF facility, the fire truck house for the new, for our equipment, the hangar that that, those vehicles are stored in now and operate out of, and the hangar adjacent to it are part of our maintenance development for our, our staff. Our staff work in a 1942 hangar right now that is sorely in need of replacement. So we can move those two hangars that are blocking the construction of the 38,000-foot hangar for $10,000 apiece, and I can't build that kind of square footage for $10,000. So we have a plan to move those forward across the runway over to the facility where the new snow removal building will be built adjacent to it, so everything is together. Once those hangars are moved, then we plan to build a 38,000, up to a 38,000-square-foot hangar. I have been in discussions with several companies, and one is very interested in doing that design. We have not put an RFP out yet, because they would prefer to wait and just do a land lease and build themselves, instead of us doing RFP if we want to ask for someone to build it. So we're looking at that, and that should be coming to closure in the spring.
And what you're, what you're stating as far as the funding for this is public-private partnership?
Yes, sir. It can be. Or we can run it and take the proceeds.
Okay. So others, if the council were to move forward with this, it would be under anticipation or the expectation that it would be from public-private partnerships?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
Okay. The air carrier rehab. Okay, the air carrier rehab. Several years ago, back in two thousand thirteen, there was a thirty percent design done to look at refurbishing the nineteen ninety-three terminal building as well as any additional space for growth that would be needed. So as we're moving forward with the recruitment of new air service in here with some other airlines and as we expand, then we would, this is the proposal to move forward with that. We need a new roof. We need a lot of new things out there from the wear and tear and the age of the building. That is all part of the redesign to also add additional space and refurbish that. So the thirty percent design then under this one would be a, a new design to finish up that, that, that scope of work. And then we would bid that out to have it refurbished. That is eligible under FAA, although FAA will not pay for it even though it's eligible because it's not a safety factor, so it would have to come out of our PFCs and some of our entitlement money as well as some local funding. The FEMA cargo joint-use distribution center is, is what I was speaking about earlier with the runway extension, the cargo ramp that would go in, that is a joint-use facility and there is FEMA money, although I have not applied for it yet. We have to have further meetings in January, which we are scheduling with MEMA and FEMA and our emergency management staff here to see if we can get some funding. I know that Senator Carden and Van Hollen have already put together a small work group and their staff on the Hill to work with FEMA to see about our designation and what we can do to help facilitate that. Because we're a three-state island, basically, without our bridges and tunnels, it becomes a three-state effort and that's, that's, that's very good. It's always better not to be alone. Taxiway F, Foxtrot Extension and the Apron. When the airport was redesigned and they closed the crosswind third runway years ago, they ripped out the taxiway that was, that gave access from the Purdue and FedEx side of the airport over to taxi, to, excuse me, the runway end of five. So that is on the radar for FAA as well as for us in two thousand twenty and twenty-one for the FAA. So they would be funding a majority of that and it would be another ninety-five-five split with, with MAMA and us, or MAA and us. And that pretty much goes through the projects. Any questions that I can answer?
Well, maybe you were, are the finance don.
Yes, I don't. Don squared here.
Exactly. So, exactly. So there's enterprise projects and the general fund projects. What was the logic in, you know, some of the projects coming from enterprise and some coming from general fund? Was there a way that you classified thems or was that just kind of arbitrary, which ones would be paid for?
Hey.
No, it is how you had on it. Is this your five million over two years?
No, I know. This was the five million over two years that we were trying to attain for one-time infusion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I mean, but.
The rest is just, it wasn't an exception. This was an exception, I guess, is why.
Well, I'm talking just general, overall. You know, what, why are some enterprise funds, why are some not? Is that just, you know, we could do it in this fund and not in that fund? I mean, is there an internal logic as to what?
So, infrastructure is typically in other airports funded by their, their county, even if they're an enterprise zone, because infrastructure is the county's obligation typically. So unless we do it under a private partnership, which I'm trying to span out and do some of the infrastructure projects that way. And then they, in turn, reap the profit from it instead of the enterprise. So these projects are things that, like your fire department, you typically pay in the county for your fire departments, for your citizens, and the airport's no exception. So that would be one of those items that would come out of that. The taxiway apron, those are things with the corporate, those are things that FAA doesn't pay for anymore because it's not, quote, "safety-related" to the operation of the main runway and taxiways. So it leaves it into the state funding and local funding. So we have requested grant money from MAA and if we get it, then our, our funding would be, they would pay seventy-five percent and we would pay twenty-five percent. So instead of paying the whole seven fifty there for that taxi lane, for example, then we would pay twenty-five percent of that and I think our sheet was broken down that way.
Yeah, I know with some of that. Well, and so we talked about forward funding. So is that, is that what that's talking about?
Yes, sir.
So you would fund the whole amount and then look to get the?
And then when we are reimbursed, yes, sir, when we're reimbursed. Same thing with the question that President Cannon said regarding the snow removal. If we don't get the funding for the snow removal, this is a forward funding of it, is the way we put this. And then if we get forward funded, then we reimburse. But if we don't get the forward funding, because nothing is certain with the FAA until they write their check, and there, there are facilities that we have to have.
So, so on that, with the snow removal, you know, we could be under this on the hook for the full one point five-five or the two hundred thousand, it just kind of depends. But we would forward fund the whole amount and then look for reimbursement of the one point?
Before the construction would start, I would know that answer. So that, that is why it's put into my budget the way it is, because I have to ask it here because I can't put anything forward for a grant that wasn't in my county CIP. So when I put it in the county CIP, I have to ask for full funding because I don't have the answer yet for my FAA and MAA funding. Hopefully, I get the funding that we asked for. We've got great support congressionally and through our governor and everyone else that if we aren't, aren't strong enough in our recommendation and our justifications, then we can also tap into the resources that we have there. The money is tight. AIP money is being looked at very carefully right now under the reauthorization bill and we've got our fingers crossed it's gonna increase, so.
Joe.
Any other questions?
Yes. You've talked about an ARF building, you've also talked about a building for snow removal equipment. Why, why can't those two buildings, why can't that be incorporated as the same building?
It could and you could put it there, but the way the design is gonna be, where the old terminal building was, and we put three bays for the ARF facility, if we add the third bay for an emergency EMT or a future joint-use facility, then we don't have room to expand the terminal because the terminal will join that, that corner so that we can have access to the building there.
So you have to build the ARF building there so you can expand the terminal?
No, no, no. If, if we put the snow removal with the ARF building.
No, that's not what I meant.
Okay.
Why don't you put the ARF with the snow removal?
On the other side of the field? It won't meet our call-out time. We're required three minutes to the middle of each, to the end of each runway. And that is the most adverse, advantageous point to put it. Our current location actually gives us short on one runway and it's temporary and FAA has given us a waiver.
The other question I had, and this is a design question, you're planning on putting a restaurant over top of the ARF building, correct?
Yes, sir, under a private partnership.
Yeah. Have you secured a tenant for that?
I am in the process. We are opening the new passenger center, which I hope when we have a grand opening, you'll come see that. Our passenger and conference center is a test to have restaurant vendors come out and, and sell their food to test to see if it fits their business model. And then we'll put an RFP out to, to propose the building and then they can come and bid whoever wants it.
Restaurants on the airport doesn't have, they don't have a very good history of.
They were never located where you could see the runway. Airplanes fly from Washington DC to Cambridge, Maryland every day to have lunch at Kay's and watch the airplanes. We have C-130 assault landings out here every day. The F-one, the F-35 comes over and practices. There's a lot to watch out on that runway and people will fly here if they don't drive here.
Yeah, okay. The other question, it's a design question. You're gonna have the rest, have the ARF trucks underneath the restaurant, what's gonna keep the diesel fuel fumes from migrating into the restaurant?
The ventilation system. This is a model that is not new, it's been done many times.
Okay, so that won't be, be a problem?
No, sir.
Okay. You've never eaten the truck stop, Joe?
Oh, I'm a truck stopper. I like the. But restaurants not over top of the trucks either.
I like the idea of the drone facility. I, I, a similar question as Mark said, because I was, I was wondering the same thing. The drone facility design, sir, why is that specifically listed as a bonded project as opposed to being listed as enterprise?
I can build it under a public-private partnership, but I don't have control over the building. So if we become a, a lead tenant in the, the process here and we're actually selected, then I can use that building. Otherwise, I will have to rent the space to host that project.
How does that distinguish whether or not it's gonna be from the general fund or the enterprise fund?
Um, I don't understand that question. I think I need you to.
I believe you chose it to be in the general fund because you don't have funding for it.
I don't have funding for it, no. It's, it's really just a hangar with a concrete pad that's a little larger than a helipad and it's already been approved on our airport layout plan and we have category exclusion, EPA approval, environmental approval for that. We also have FAA air traffic approval to operate drones in and out of that air, that site already without this project. I would like to build it and like we do other buildings that we, hangers that we currently have. We have hangers that we lease and we collect. That one I would really like to do because of the advantage it gives us to be able to bring new business to this community and to the airport. Those drone operators and manufacturers are multi-billion dollar operators. We've got Intel and Google both looking at joining, they have not yet, but they're very interested in our platform and our concept because we're so close to Wallops. It really works well. So I think we have a huge opportunity here. I can build it under a public-private partnership and then just lease some of the space, either way.
Now, she did say that the FAA will not fund.
Right. No, I wasn't worried. I wasn't concerned about that part of it.
The determination between.
It's kind of like a semantics, for lack of better terms, like as Mark said, just what was the thought process behind it were?
And, and one other thought process, one other thought process behind that is I did not ask the state of Maryland, because the state of Maryland has the University of Maryland. They are also running to be one of the test centers and I did not feel I wanted to ask them because of the conflict of interest that it would create for them over at, at the other airport to ask for funding, nor did I want to tip my hand.
I thought earlier you said that the state would be an option since the federal government wasn't, wasn't gonna pay.
That would be after this process, after the selection is done. I have not asked for it yet. I can do it later next year and it's a next-year project. So, for example, MAA, their, their request for grants next year is in June. We're having a workshop on the ninth to finish up this year and we put our new ones in in June for money that comes to them on July first. And they fund everything we give on July first. So if I don't, if I'm not selected and I will know that by, by June, then I, if I am selected, I will put it in because I won't be causing a conflict. I don't, there's just certain things about sharing with some of the universities that has caused us problems in the past and I'm preferring to keep things kind of private until we know we need it. And I've still got time to ask for it. That doesn't come until June and the determination will be made early May for the selection, if not earlier.
Does a drone actually have to be on an airport?
No, sir, it doesn't. If they're under fifty-five pounds and vertical lift, they can take off as they are right now from Wacomaco or Warwick Community. They're in partnership with Wallops Island. If we get this facility built, they will be one of our tenants to operate there for the first responder training that they're doing under that partnership. So I have tenants there. It's just, to me, it would be easier for me to share that if I were lent the builder and renter as, as an operator instead of giving that to a developer. Because a developer will want to, to market it differently. And if we could use it as a joint center of excellence, so to speak, to where multiple users can use it and we charge a fee for that on a parata basis of space and time versus leasing it to a operator under a land grant and let them build it, that, that was, I really thought we could make some money on that opportunity is why I put it in the budget the way I did.
I guess what I was getting at, you say it's gonna, you know, this, the drone testing and the drone business is gonna grow and it'll be kind of a free market out there for anybody. You're saying that the University of Maryland, Eastern Shore is having a drone testing park. I mean, is this something that could be, you know, approved anywhere, so will there be a lot of competition on this?
There's three hundred applicants nationwide and when we went to the conference, they told us they were looking for diversity of applicants. So they're looking for a diverse type of operation. One of the things that we have that College Park doesn't have is some of the military operations and the closeness to Wallops. They don't have that airspace. So that gives a whole different platform for our communication company that wants to partner and for our surveillance partner. So they can go out, they've already got military-approved software and hardware and it's actually installed at Wallops. So it makes it very easy for them to go into the Wallops restricted airspace that is over towards Snow Hill and take a departure out of our airport, go over there, run their testing missions and then come right back. And we also have a, a taxiway that goes there, which no one else has because of where we put the proximity of our, our development and our center. So we're looking for both vertical and land takeoff and landing drones.
All right. Thank you very much. Very aggressive plan.
Hey, if you have any other questions, you know where to reach me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for the time, Kim. Next item we have is the capital improvement program, recreation parks and tourism. And we have a couple of very distinguished guests. How is everyone?
Very well, thank you. Happy New Year.
Good evening. If you'd like, just announce to the public who you are and I'll let whoever wants to take the lead.
Very good. My name's Steve Miller. I'm the director for Recreation Parks Tourism for Wycomico County.
Pam Olin, deputy director for Rec Parks Tourism. So I, the, I'm starting basically at the summary page, page sixty-six of the capital improvement plan that summarizes the projects for Rec Parks and Tourism. The question I have for you is, we have individual in the same order, individual project sheets behind, is that the easier way to flip through or would you like us to start at the summary or work through the summary page?
Flip through, please.
Okay. So we'll go to, start at the next page. The next, the very first project on the.
Let me make sure everybody's on that page. Everybody good with that? It's the page seventy on the, sixty-seven on your computer.
Yes.
Well.
The first one listed is the Civic Center Exterior Metal Replacement. That project is listed for, in fiscal nineteen, for five hundred thousand dollars. We have split that between using enterprise funding and general fund funding to do that project. That project is both an aesthetic and a maintenance. If you've driven around the building recently, the slanted shed roofs over Flanders, over the box office entrance, over Da Nang, you'll see kind of the paint peeling off of them and those need to be rehabilitated. Well, with that, we have the opportunity to, we, with all the renovation we have done on the building, we have done very little to the exterior of the building to make it look fresh, new. And there's not a lot that you can do, but one thing we can do is change the color of the metal roofing. And if you look at the top of the arena, there is multiple feet of metal that starts from the top and goes down and I honestly don't know the dimensions of that. I just know it looks really, really tall. And, but it's very brown and very kind of drab and all of the shed roofs around the building as well are that same brown. So this would do two things. It would, we would change the color, change the look of the exterior of our building and as well as renovate the building. So, and, and make it more watertight. We have looked into two ways of doing that. One is just replacing the metal itself and the other is to strip it and repaint it. Both are about the same and so our thought process is with the project itself, we would bid it out both ways and see which way we get the better price. Any questions on that project?
Have you chosen a color?
Uh, not yet. I would lean personally, and since I've been the one doing a lot of the color selections, I would probably lean towards a blue that would go well, just because we've been trying to kind of do. I would probably lean towards a blue that would go well, just because we've been trying to kind of do a sense of place. Well, blue is water, that is Eastern Shore. It would brighten up the exterior, but I don't have a specific blue in mind. The next project is a twenty-twenty project. Again, it is also a Civic Center project. This would replace the elevators and escalators in the building. Both of those are original to the building from nineteen eighty when it was built. We only have one elevator, and we have two escalators. They were intended to be able to reverse the direction on them. They have been operating so long in one direction that you really only have an up escalator and a down escalator. They don't like going the opposite direction. About the only thing, we have done maintenance on them, obviously, and they do function, and we have replaced treads, but we believe that it is probably time to make the replacement in whole so that we don't end up with a failure and not have anything. Any questions? The last major project we have listed for the Civic Center is related to the Midway HVAC system. That is actually original to the Midway Room, which goes back to nineteen seventy-four. We have two units. We call them, if you've ever driven around to the side of the, where the employees park, there's a kind of a cinder block fenced area. That cinder block area has the air conditioning units for the Da Nang rooms and as well as Midway. We are not a hundred percent sold on the idea, but there is, we are looking into the idea of whether or not we could move those units to the roof of Da Nang. We'd have to see if the engineering would allow it and that kind of stuff. But this would allow us to replace those units, have them upgraded, and also potentially clear out a space next to the building that we could utilize in a different way.
Are you going to look at different, different kinds of HVAC?
We would look into upgrading the technology that we have, and I mean, again, this, the fact that they have survived since nineteen seventy-four is fantastic, but if they go, we have no cooling or heating for the Midway Room. The next project is Cedar Hill Park and Marina. Steve was going to take over from here.
Yeah, so the Cedar Hill Park, we're proposing two projects that total a hundred and five thousand dollars. Seventy-five thousand of that would be to replace the restrooms. Those restrooms, now the foundation of the existing restroom is starting to fail. The blocks are starting to crack. We're having some drainage issues. So we'd like to just completely replace that. That'd be about seventy-five thousand to do that, which would service the Marina. And then the remaining thirty was to dedicate to some of the small cabin rentals. We feel like that could provide some potential. We do have two slip, which are transient slip rentals. So the folks don't just park their boat there for the year. They'll just maybe come for a night, and it's a twenty-dollar fee to put your boat in for the night. And so we would package these, these small cabins with that for an increased fee. They could come stay the night. They'd be simple, simple one-room cabins. We'd have the infrastructure there, so it'd be relatively inexpensive to build these cabins. So, so part of that hundred and five is about thirty thousand dollars to construct a few cabins.
Steve, most of your friends and people in boats stay on their boats.
They do.
Yeah, I mean, why would they want to rent a cabin if they have, you know, cabins on their boat? I don't understand the thought process there.
Yeah, some, some would, and we think, you know, we might get some other transient traffic as well that may not be boaters. So I think it would be a combination of the two, but, but you're right, some would stay directly on their boats.
I can also envision people who, you know, fish the week of, the main rock, the opening week of rockfish, and they don't have a cabin on their boat. They might keep their boat at Cedar Hill, but they, you know, commute to that boat and they take a week off. I have family members that do that, take a week off and do that, do that opening week of fishing, and they might be interested in staying right there at their boat, then they would not have to travel back and forth to be at their boat at four AM in the morning.
Where on that property are you looking at putting them?
At Cedar Hill.
Yeah.
We're talking, it's open for debate because part of what we're thinking conceptually is just this small one-room that could be portable, but we were thinking about the softball fields.
The old ones, not, not the newer ones, the old ones.
So that was the thought, but, but they could, in likelihood, they could be portable if we needed to move them.
You don't want to be too portable. They might disappear.
Well, yeah, that's a good point.
Do you have the grants locked down on that?
It's not locked in for sure, but the grant portion would be program open space. So we do get an allotment every year that we would dedicate.
Delegate Anderson is here right now. We good?
Very good.
Um, yeah.
The next one. Next one is Pirate's Wharf Master Plan and Park Development. We're in the process, as we speak, there's a work group that the executive has tasked to come up with some recommendations for how to develop Pirate's Wharf. The work group has met several times. The intention is to submit recommendations to the executive probably early spring, and then it would obviously come before this council to look at as far as funding and be part of that budget process. What we've put in here for numbers, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for FY nineteen. Fifty thousand of that would be to help us develop a park master plan. Once a concept and, you know, the usage of the park is determined, we would use that to develop the park master plan, help us develop bid documents that we could bid out the project. That is grant money. Program Open Space allows for acquisition funds to be used for master plans. The only stipulation is we'd have to spend equal or greater than in development of whatever that plan would be. The hundred thousand that we've earmarked for FY nineteen would essentially help us do some initial site work, site planning. Of course, it depends on what ends up happening at the park. Either that or in some, some measure, address the shoreline there, which, that was not part of that loan agreement that we talked about earlier today. But that hundred thousand dollars could get us started at least to prepare the site. And then FY twenty, we would probably look to fully develop the park and to what it's going to be. So that would be our plan for next fiscal year.
I haven't been back there because it's always chained off.
Right.
I mean, I could make, I could schedule times. You know, Bob suggested that before, too. But is it, is it, can it be, can you put a dock there and actually, so you can pull a boat in or anything like that?
Yeah, there's, there's an old, old bulkhead that's kind of been damaged, and there's a lot of debris there, so you can't disturb that, all that. So the thought was is to cut it back. There's different options that DNR, in fact, our DNR rep was here earlier for the other shoreline projects. So you could cut that back and create like a bulkhead where people could come up to the shoreline. And then on the right-hand side, there's a little, like a little pier that sticks out that you could possibly-
In a small boat ramp. The issue is, is the location of that shoreline protection is right at probably one of the narrowest points and on a hard turn of the river. And so you really would not want permanent boating tie-up there because the barges trying to make that turn would have some difficulty if we had ma, if we make that a tie-up. There had been, yeah, if we, we had, there had been a concept previously further downriver of shoreline or of slips. At this point in time, that's not in the concept that we're looking at, but there is further down on the property a location that it could be considered. But the location where the bulkhead is currently would not lend itself well to a, any slips.
Okay.
Steve, speaking of boat slips, you have Cedar Hill.
Yes.
We rent boat slips, and then we have the other, what's the other one?
The other Cedar Hill project.
The other, the other place is Nanacoke.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the project later.
What's the vacancy rate? I mean, are they full?
Nanacoke is almost full. Cedar Hill, I would say about three-quarters full. Have, have, I'd have to look. I don't know exactly how many slips, but Nanacoke was close to capacity. Cedar Hill, there's still a bit of space.
Nanacoke's more workboat trade.
Yes, Nanacoke, and we, with the resurgence in the economy, have seen that one tick back up quicker than the pleasure boating. They, the worker boats like Nanacoke in the fact that it's closer to the outlet of the river than Cedar Hill, you know, more fuel further to, further to go.
Yeah, we can, we'd be happy to get you whatever.
No, it's fine. I just wondered. I know that, you know, after the, when the recession happened, there was a lot of problems running slips, you know, that kind of killed the boating industry for a while, so.
The next project on the list is, it's titled Playground Equipment. We have, we started about two, three years ago, a process of evaluating all of our playground modules throughout the county and whether or, and upgrading those modules. The, so we have put in the plan for, thank you, because I'm going to start again. I'm sorry. Tickle cough. We put in the plan for fiscal nineteen to replace the East Wycomico Little League Eastside Youth Sports Complex, which is in Willards, the Billie Jean Jackson and Emerson Holloway structures. These would all be POS projects. That's the reason why the funding is split between state grant and general fund. We would only have to have the ten percent match. Fiscal twenty, we would replace the Shoemaker Park and Cedar Hill, and fiscal twenty-one, we would replace Winter Place Park, George Nichols, and Indian Village Parks. We are getting ready to start our process for fiscal nineteen for allocating funds related to the POS, and so these would be the projects that we would put in our plan related to POS. The next one is similar in concept. Again, we started a process of renovating our tennis courts and basketball courts. Same concept. We have scheduled out which ones need to have replacement done. We have, if you compare this to prior years, you'll see that we have juggled some of the courts. It made more sense to do both the tennis courts and the basketball court at Winter Place in one year instead of doing one one year and one the next year. So that has changed from prior years, but the concept is still the same, that we're systematically going through our parks and renovating the courts. And I have heard good things about some of those renovations from different constituents saying that they really appreciate, like, I believe Billie Jean Jackson's basketball court was greeted with rave reviews.
Oh, yeah.
And again, this would be POS funds, so we would only fund ten percent.
Back to the previous page with the little leagues. It says replace the structures. What are they, like the concession stands and the bathroom?
Just the playground modules, just the, the swing sets, the climbing structures, which-
So no building structure.
No, 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 no. These are just the modules themselves.
And maybe some fencing.
At Emerson Holloway, that is one that we are looking at doing some work on the fencing and the pavilion itself.
Okay. Now, the Cedar Hill Park, you're not looking for open space for that. It says state grant, fifty-four-five, but you're not looking for open space for that?
That would be the open space portion of that. It would.
Okay.
That would be on the bathroom portion of it. We, we don't believe that the tiny houses would qualify. So we would, for the bathroom renovation, we would put that through the POS, but we would not put the tiny houses through.
Okay, gotcha.
Which is the next one? Harmon Field Fencing. This is one that we have had in the CIP. We are requesting it actually just be pushed back a year to go to twenty-twenty, but we would replace the backstops, the dugouts, and the home run fencing at that location. And again, it would be another POS project.
Who uses that field?
We use it some locally for practices. It's primarily a practice field now. When we had lights, and that was one of the few that had lights, we would use that more as a game field for, for our women's league and adult leagues. But now with the complex being what it is, it's primarily going to be a practice field for us.
So who, as a practice field, where would the constituents go to rent out the field? Because that's what you would do, rent it out.
We do. We do that through the Civic Center Box Office.
You go to the box office to rent it out. Is that including all high schools?
They would be eligible, like a softball team would be eligible.
I know some of those fields have been rented out in the past.
Yeah.
But I didn't know where they went to.
Yeah, we typically, for our leagues, would have a cheaper rate, but it's very inexpensive to rent those, yeah. The next two projects relate to Purdue Stadium. The first is the boiler replacement. In our twenty-year lease agreement, there's a depreciation scheduled, it's Exhibit C in that agreement, that outlines the life expectancy of certain systems at the stadium. Each one has a year where we, as the county, are expected to either take over the maintenance or replacement of those. So this is boilers coming up in the next few years. That would be our responsibility. So we would, this, this was an estimate, and we're, we're looking for better estimates. I've had a struggle trying to get people out there, but this would be an estimate to replace those boiler systems. But we could also go the route of maintaining them if the county decided to go that route. But they would be, become our responsibility. Beginning in two thousand nineteen, there's three, and then two thousand twenty-two, there's three more. So those would become our responsibility at that point. The second has to do with, I'm sorry, did I?
No, I was just-
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. The second is the final phase of the twenty-year lease improvements. The five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the county's committed all of its money to that project, and we are, we are well on our way to completing that. Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars is from the state unless Mr. Anderson, is he still here? Unless he comes up with another couple million for us.
Put your name on it.
Yeah. But four hundred and eighty thousand dollars-
Take a good, take a good night.
Yeah, right. Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the state, and then the team, as part of the agreement, will kick in another hundred thousand, and that would complete that project. This offseason, we should be done with all the major structural improvements. All the county priorities should be done this offseason, and then next offseason, this would be completed. So that, those are the two Purdue Stadium projects. If there are any questions on those. Very good. And then the last, or not the last two, but the next two are the items that were on the agendas earlier, but these are Cove Road and Roaring Point Breakwater Systems. I don't know if anybody had further questions on those. Very good. And then the final, final piece is Cedar Hill Marina Restoration itself. The past several years, we've been taking, we get an annual grant from the state for a waterway improvement grant for ninety-nine thousand dollars, which we've been taking section by section and making improvements to the, to the Marina. We've completed slips one through sixty-one. In fact, we're hoping to get on an agenda in a couple, a couple of weeks. We missed one of the grants for this current fiscal year, which we'd like to complete some work this spring. So we're going to see if we can get on a future agenda for a budget amendment to complete some work this spring. But then next year, the plan in FY nineteen is to complete another section of slips, one twenty-two to one thirty-seven, and then out years, we'd have further work as we complete the Marina. The hope would be in the next four to five years to be completely done, which would last us on another thirty, thirty to forty years with a complete restoration of that facility, so.
And about four years ago, we started the process, three years ago, we started the process here. We had done this same process over at Nanacoke, and that's how Nanacoke got renovated when it did. And so we've been taking these grants from the state and just taking sections, and the state has been fine with us doing that, and they're, and as we have other funds available from them, we have also been looking at, okay, can we expand the scope and make that instead of ninety-nine this year? But we know we get ninety-nine, so that's why we have put that in here at, at that amount.
What is the Waterway Improvement Fund? Just curious. I hadn't heard of it, about it before.
Yeah, it's, it's a state fund that addresses specific where you have facilities that have water access, so.
It's for licensing the boats.
Yeah. Is that how it's funded?
Yeah, that's, I think, pretty sure that's right, yeah.
And there's very specific requirements as to what is approved and not approved. So we are using, we used- So we are using, we used waterway improvement money to do the Wood Tippin Boat Ramp last year and we also were awarded funds to do the Riverside Boat Ramp this year. And so again, those are, there, there is no match requirement associated with those grants and so it's a hundred percent state funding to do these grants. The only reason why there is a, funds listed as being from an enterprise from twenty twenty is if, if we're down to needing just a little bit more to complete the project and be totally done, instead of waiting one more year to get one more allotment, we were looking at, you know, you, you put a small amount in and then the project would be completed in that final fiscal year.
Any other questions?
So in the Civic Center, I didn't see anything about hockey. I mean, is there, I mean, you know, we'd have to ask.
Yeah.
So what, you know, I mean, we were told there may be, you know, need to refer versus Civic Center if that was going to happen, so what?
Yeah, it would definitely need to, if, if that were to develop, we would definitely need to, to bring that forward. Currently, the, the agreement we have with the consultant is through the end of March and so the consultant's been tasked with trying to find an ownership group, group and a league that would make sense for us. We feel like that's, that's a first step. If there's genuine interest from an ownership group and there's genuine interest from a league, we would then push that ball further down the road. So at this point, that's still in process, so nothing to the point where we would put forward the money, but, but it is something that's still being explored. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Well, I want to thank you guys for putting this together and, you know, I know I did a lot of fussing. We were talking about acquiring more land and not doing anything with the land that we had, so I'm pleased to see that you are looking at parts worth down there. The, I don't know about the tiny houses, I'm not so sure about that. This is a pretty aggressive CIP, both for the airport and this, and I know we're seeing a lot of increase in revenues, you know, from income taxes and property taxes, but I do think we need to be cautious. We are on an upswing in the economy and economies go up and they come down, so whatever we do now is going to affect us a few years from now, so we still need to be cautious with what we spend. So I want to thank you again for what you're doing.
Just, just, the summary page at the very beginning does show though, yes, we're looking at, for two point three million dollars, but only four hundred thousand dollars of that would be coming from general fund. Most of it is grant that we're looking for.
It's still taxpayers' dollars.
It is still taxpayers' dollars. It's just a.
If you're pursuing open space funding, that's a good thing.
Yep.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Have a good evening and thanks for this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Entertaining motion to adjourn as Wacomico County Councils convene as Wacomico County Urban Services Commission.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Hold the favor.
All right.
Thank you. Now convened as the Urban Services Commission, item on the work session, which was originally a resolution, legislative session, is Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash oh one to establish an Urban Services Commission policy on non-beneficial use of water. I think you've seen it in here, it's in reference to a few letters we've been getting to, to forgive water bills that, the cost, forgive some of the expenses in water bills that have been imposed upon some of the citizens of Wacomico County. Don, I know you put together the resolution with the idea of attaching it to how the city is functioning.
Yes.
My concern with that, first off, was the fact that I didn't feel quite easy putting together a resolution that specifically stated in the resolution, everything was following a plan that the City of Salisbury was doing. It just seemed a little bit.
I put together the policy.
Okay.
I don't know if the policy has to go by resolution or not, but the policy, when we spoke before at the prior work session, was that you, my belief was that you wanted to follow what the City of Salisbury was following as far as there had to be a, something had to be fixed, they had to pay for someone to come fix it or fix it themselves, but show receipts and that someone from the City of Salisbury Public Works had to go out there and review, foresee what was broken and then see that it had been fixed. So I tried to implement that into a policy for the commission with, without actually reiterating everything that they said. So I referenced the City of Salisbury resolution within it. And above that, I added that in order for there to be a waiver for the urban service bill, that the City of Salisbury would provide us with the information that they had collected. Now, sometimes the property owner goes ahead and provides it to us, but the City of Salisbury has always granted, whenever they do waive due to there being high usage and a repair needed, they have forwarded us the information I've, I have in here. So this isn't something that they, that we're asking them to do above what they're already doing now.
Right. I guess my, my first question was, okay, what if I didn't think that one of the requirements was that the bill would be three times higher than your regular bill?
Okay.
What if I were just to say, well, maybe two times higher is enough to consider it? Well, that's not the city ordinance, but this resolution says, well, you have to pay, you have to follow the city ordinance and that I don't think is the, a good intention for us to be able to make a decision as, as this body would want.
Now, when we spoke before, I believe that the, that unless the city was going to waive some of their bill, we were not going to waive any of our bill.
And well, that brings up a good question that, that Mr. Taylor has suggested before. Bob, you were, you were talking about this earlier.
Well, yeah, I mean, i- if the city is going to make a decision on this or on a request, why wouldn't the county just essentially just rubber stamp it? And if the city grants the waiver, it would just pass through and if they don't grant it, it wouldn't.
And, and there was no policy on that.
Well, that brings up the question as to why was the letter coming to our attention if the city was the one establishing, because the letter that came to our attention was asked for relief. Why was that coming to our attention if the city was, already had the plan established and in place?
To waive their water, not to waive the sewer.
Okay, so that's the point.
That's the point.
Is the county is sewer.
It's the, the sewers through the county. The sewer bill is from the county, the water bill is from the City of Salisbury and there was no policy in place that gave the Department of Finance the rights to waive that even though the City of Salisbury, without it coming before the commission. That's what we're trying to put in place, is to give us the flexibility to take care of this without you receiving letter after letter after letter.
Right. Well, I, what I was hoping in the brief discussion that we'd had before on it was that the city was simply, I mean, the county was simply put together, I, I don't think an ordinance is the correct term, but some type of.
Procedure.
Procedure, thank you.
Policy procedure.
Directive as it is here, that is our directive, not something that says, look, we're, we're doing what the, you know, code three oh six, six two five says to the city. I was hoping that whatever we put together would be our directive.
Would be our directive. We don't do the reading.
And I couldn't amend that to a resolution.
That absolutely, and this is a first draft, so if we need to make changes to it and come back, we could certainly do that. We do not go out and look at if there is a issue at someone's property. It would be the City of Salisbury to go there and to look and to determine if there was a leak and if they are going to waive any of the water. If the City of Salisbury decides that they, there is nothing broken and they're not going to waive, do we really want to have to hire someone to go out there and make an assessment?
And I think part of the first requirement would be that they, that they forward to this commission, the city's results. We're not, it's not binding, but they forward those to us first and then we'll make our decisions after that.
So you do want to make a decision, you don't want it solely based on whether the City of Salisbury is going to waive or not waive?
Well, we'd like to know what the.
The City of Salisbury is doing.
The whole process has to be, okay, what has the city done, you know, bring that to us and make, make us aware of what the city has done so that we can follow, you know, what the county might choose to do and then at that point in time, even though the city may have given them a, a break to a certain degree, we may even have, we want to have the option to do the same relief based on whatever the county feels is fair.
Sure.
But not necessarily following the exact same procedure the city might.
Okay.
I thought the whole point was to give Don the authority.
The more flexibility, that was my understanding.
I know, but I'm saying to give, when I say the Urban Services Commission, I mean in a resolution that we could then take, the county has that authority. I, I, yeah.
And to give me more flexibility to do that.
Not us, not us.
That's why I thought we were trying to get away from coming up here.
But again, you're saying that we should do a resolution rather than just have it as a policy. Well, again, as, I guess, as, as, I don't know if you said it or Bob Taylor said it, whether this requires a resolution, whether changing a policy requires a resolution or not, I would think it, Mike.
I, I would think it would make sense to do a resolution.
I think if you're going to give me some flexibility and authority to, based on your guidelines, to make these decisions, that it should be a resolution.
Well, resolutions always have restrictions on them. We may not agree with the restrictions after we pass the resolution, so it could come back to bite us.
Well, I did put in here that if they want to petition, they, you know, if they didn't agree, they could petition, they could petition, because I'm sure there are going to be folks who, and the letters that you, we have outstanding right now, there weren't leaks based on needing a repair and they would still like to have some of their sewer bill waived.
I thought very strongly, one of those letters very specifically didn't qualify.
That's a.
That's what she just said.
That's exactly.
And when you turn them down and say, no, that's one we, we'll get.
And that's when they probably, when I say, based on the policy we have in place.
Well, as long as it goes through, you know, some, some system first.
Sure. But you would like to have for the Department of Finance to have a little more leeway than based on just what the City of Salisbury is doing?
Right. We should have our own separate directive that certainly could, could ask that they bring forward what the city's recommendations have been and that way the city has been out there and they've looked at it.
Okay.
And then we could make our decision based on that and at that point in time is when we would tell them what we feel we would like to do.
Okay.
It would be a simple thing as even though the city requires at least three times the average consumption, we could say our directive, directive could be that the amount of increased consumption be, I don't know.
But the problem is get in there, if it's lower than what the city wants, the city's not going to investigate it, is that right? If, let's say the city's threshold is three times and we say, well, two times for us.
They'll investigate for water.
Only if it's.
Only if it's three times.
Three times, so we can't set it lower. So if we set it at two times, we have this, the county has to send people out there.
That's, that's where I'm coming out. Because we do not have, we do not do the readings or have a department to do this.
It seems like we're bound by what the city does because they're the ones with, who's, who are providing the services.
But we could still have, well, we could still have our own guidelines and, and say two times, because the reason I say that is because we could then look at what the city sends to us and say, okay, well, it's, it's not, oh, I see what you're saying, the city's not even.
They're not going to look at it unless it's three times.
Yeah, they're not going to investigate whether it was a leak or.
And I think that that would leave us up to.
But you necessarily have to go out and investigate, I mean, can't you just look at what they're telling, what they, well, maybe not.
Because you don't know what it is, if it's beneficial use or.
Yeah, I had two other suggestions too, and the first is, I have gray hair on this one, so many years ago, there was an agreement between the city and the county, kind of a master urban services agreement. I've seen it, it's been about twenty-five years ago and that might have something in it that pertains to this. So one thought would be, we might want to look and see if there is that or some other agreement that, that applies, number one, just a general good practice. The other thought I had was on the petition, does the council really want to hear every petition that might come up after Dawn has made her ruling? And, you know, you could do this like the Court of Appeals does, they don't take every case. They poll the judges and if so many judges want to hear it, it goes to the court. You might want to do the same thing here with this petition to provide that, well, if three or four members of the council think it's worth hearing, to hear it. If not, you don't hear it, because you could, you could be getting a lot of.
Well, I always thought that it's good to have an appeals process for anybody, but again, we don't want to be inundated with it, but I, I would think that this, it was very seldom that this comes up.
We've had more recently than we've seen in years. It, it seems that recently they've increased.
I think if you open the floodgates, you know, you know, it could be different.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I think, I think he has a point that we might want to have some sort of process where we don't have to take everything, but ones where, you know, a sizable number of council members or urban commission members, I guess, we're intuition now, think that that would be the, that would be to do.
How many? Do you want more? Or do we need to even put that in here?
Well, I think you have to make them where the appeal process, if there is one.
Yeah.
And that's something we've talked about, how much we want to accept that responsibility and, and do that when we actually pass the resolution, we'll be getting back to that.
Okay.
But I think it's good to put in there and should be considered.
Okay.
So I guess where we would go from here is it sounds like we're going to have to file pretty much a directive that's very similar to what the city is doing. I just would want to strike references maybe to their code and other details, you think?
Do you want, I did this two different ways. I had it where basically I reiterated what their code said and then I did it the way that I, I gave you where I referenced, because they do get the readings and they do provide the readings to us and when they waive a water bill due to excessive usage and there being a repair, they forward us the information. And that's where I kind of leaned with going to where someone would need to go, look at what their criteria is before submitting, before submitting to us.
So you're saying, otherwise the exit, the first page of the Exhibit A is something that you sort of put together? The Urban Services Commission policy on our benefit.
Yes.
That's what you.
That's what I put.
It's a sun, help sunrise at all.
If you would like it, the City of Salisbury's.
No, see, I, I thought that you were suggesting that the resolution and all that be, you know, that the Water and Sewer Utility Directive, I thought you were suggesting that be part of the resolution.
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
Big difference.
Just part of the po, just part of our policy for waiving, yes.
So, oh, it's part of our resolution would be only that first page, the rest of it was simply for our reference?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you do have C attached City of Salisbury on the report, first bullet.
Yes, under the first bullet.
Well, you wouldn't even have to say C attached, you could just say, reference, reference Salisbury resolution. I don't mind if we add, you know, put something there where they can reference it.
And just not have it as part of ours and then, then take that out.
Yeah, because it says the City of Salisbury, you know, yes.
You know, you mentioned we have no way of investigating this. Should code compliance be involved in this possibly?
The county's code compliant?
Yes. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they be? Why do we have finance carrying a load here rather than code compliance?
At the time, when we receive everything, the Public Works Department for the City of Salisbury has already been out and reviewed it, seen the repair.
So the City of Salisbury has.
The City of Salisbury.
But we have nobody in the county that would use it on our behalf.
On our behalf.
Is what I'm saying.
Can speak with.
Could be. I don't know.
With them, I.
We've got somebody looking at it.
Duplicate effort.
That's my fault, but.
Yeah, but, but again, if we're talking about resolution or policy, should it be involved to the policy or in the resolution?
Well, maybe if we try to just get this on the table and then if we find out, or if finance wants to come back to us or someone wants to come back to us and say, hey, you know, this is, we could make the adjustment later.
So in the first bullet, we want to change, instead of doing C attached, we're going to take it out of the resolution and we're just going to reference there, the City of Salisbury's resolution instead of it being part of ours.
Okay. Right, 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 it won't be attached.
It won't be attached, we're just going to reference it.
Yes.
The second bullet is information that they already provide to us whenever they waive. I'd like to keep, to keep that. I like to keep, to keep that. It's, like I said, it's not requesting anything new from the City of Salisbury, they're already providing this information to us. Sometimes the property owner likes to jump the gun, so this would also tell them what they're going to need. And then they would have to, again, write a letter to the Department of Finance to request relief on their bill.
All right, and I wouldn't say based on the City of Salisbury, I would scratch based on the City of Salisbury's adjustment to the water bill, I would just say, write us a letter, because you've always referenced the city in the first.
Sure.
Okay.
Petition, and you would like to, need to add some verbiage about an appeal process to be.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll see what happens in two weeks, or when the next week goes, because that is something to think about, right? I mean, I think everybody needs to think about that.
An appeal, well, if I, I guess we could come back and address.
We don't need another work session, I think we could amend it in a regular session.
Okay.
Yeah.
That seems great. I did add in here that leave fees and penalties would not be adjusted for non-payment, but if they make arrangements with us to make a partial payment, because if we know we're going to, to waive a portion of their bill, I hate for them to come in and pay the full thing, and then they write a credit out. I'd rather let them pay the difference and waive the penalty and interest. For, um, is there anything?
I think you've done, I think you've done a really good job. Yep.
Okay. Well, I'll get these, these changes made, and we'll get on the calendar again.
Thanks for taking the time, because you're very busy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn as the Urban Services Commission, so that we can go back,